Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Tuesday, October 11th Board of County Commissioner meeting. Is Reverend Lucas Pena here? Pena? Reverend Lucas Pena? For the invocation. Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you. Guys will bow your head for a moment. Lord, we lift up this evening to you. We thank you for giving the commissioner's wisdom and clarity of communication and that people that come forward will be able to communicate clearly. Father, I thank you for giving us your guidance and whatever you would have us choose tonight. Thank you for blessing this meeting. Thank you for blessing these people. And thank you for blessing America. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Pritchett, for always being willing to do this when we've had reverends pastors and the like not show. So I appreciate you. And with that, I'll call this meeting to order. Commissioner Smith?
Please rise and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to item D, minutes for approval.
Motion to approve, ma'am?
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to resolutions. Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, ma'am. Is Ms. Cynthia Mitchell in the task force here? Come on up. It's nice to see so many wonderful faces I recognized for so many years. I'm going to read this resolution. And if somebody would like to comment at the end, we would certainly love to hear your comments. Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy and dignity, security, humanity, due to an abuser's systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control. And 3,608 domestic violence offenses were reported to law enforcement in Brevard County in 2020. And of those, seven victims were killed. And the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people and are supported by social indifference. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole here in Brevard County throughout the United States and the world. And whereas all citizens of Brevard, government officials, law enforcement agencies, healthcare providers, domestic violence programs, social service providers, educators, clergy, community leaders, together working to end the abuse of violence that continues to threaten the health, safety, and well-being of so many in our community. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve this resolution proclaiming Domestic Violence Awareness Month of October 2022.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, a second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, commissioners and county staff. On behalf of the Domestic Violence Task Force, which is just a few of us, I mean, we kind of not used to an evening meeting, so. But really happy to be here and happy that you all have acknowledged, you know, National Domestic Violence Month. For anybody who might be watching on TV or something, the hotline, the statewide hotline for domestic violence victim services is 1-800-500-1119. So it's good to put that out there. And I brought some little purple ribbons, right? Domestic violence is the purple ribbon. And if you all would, you know, like one, please, is it okay if I approach?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Please feel free to take one and wear one proudly during this month.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thanks.
All right, Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, ma'am. We have TPO representatives here for Vision Zero. How you doing, Kim? Wonderful. I'm going to read this and then the mic is yours, ma'am. "A resolution of Brevard County, Florida, adopting the goal of Vision Zero, advocating that no loss of life is acceptable on our city streets, providing an effective date and providing for adoption. Whereas the growth and vitality of our county requires safe and reliable transportation systems, and the life and health of residents are our utmost priority. Whereas Vision Zero is the concept that there is no acceptable amount of traffic deaths, serious injuries, on our roadways. Brevard County recognizes that a goal that no one should die or be seriously injured while traveling on our county streets. Whereas people walking and bicycling represent a disproportionate number of those fatalities. With driver behavior, including speeding, distracted drivers, drunk driving, are significant contributing to factors of loss of life. Whereas the Space Coast Transportation Organization adopted a resolution endorsing Vision Zero to achieve zero traffic deaths and severe injuries. And whereas the Florida Department of Transportation has formally adopted Target Zero, its own version with a national vision towards zero deaths. Madam Chair, I'd like to take a motion to approve that the county commission hereby supports and adopts the goal of Vision Zero, that no loss of life is acceptable in our streets, this day of October, the 11th, 2022."
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett? Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I'd just like to thank the commission with adoption of this resolution. You join 12 of our municipalities who have already agreed with us that zero is the only acceptable number. Traffic fatalities unfortunately are epidemic proportions and we're working as hard as we can to end those preventable deaths.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Daniel, would you like to come forward with your entourage? Thank you all for being here today. I'm going to read the resolution and then I'm going to give you the floor. Whereas, among American women, breast cancer is the second most common cancer and the second leading cause of cancer death. And whereas the American Cancer Society's 2022 estimates for breast cancer in women include 287,850 new diagnosed cases and about 43,250 women will die from breast cancer this year. And whereas breast cancer occurs mainly in women, but men can also get it. And each year, I like to mention the fact that I had a longtime high school buddy that died at age 58 from breast cancer. Whereas breast cancer, oh, I said that part. Whereas during Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we remember those lost to breast cancer, offer our support to patients and their families, and highlight our commitment to better prevention, detection, and treatment methods. And whereas American Cancer Society making strides against breast cancer walk is not a race, it is a celebration of survivorship, an occasion to express hope and a shared goal to end a disease that threatens the lives of so many people that we love. Whereas, anyone and everyone interested in fighting breast cancer can form a team and enter the walk to be held Saturday, October 22nd, starting at the Avenue in Vieira. Registration starts at 7:00 a.m. and the walk follows at 9:00 a.m. And if you've never done it before, it's a lot of fun and it's purposeful. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida does hereby proclaim the month of October 2022 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and supports research, awareness, and treatment of breast cancer, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 11th day of October 2022. Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve this resolution.
I have a motion by Commissioner Smith. Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Well, as you said, breast cancer is the most common cancer diagnosed among U.S. women and the second leading cause of death, cancer deaths in women. Unfortunately, we all know someone that has been impacted by breast cancer and the devastating impacts it has on their family, their loved ones, and themselves, of course. You know, it's never an easy disease to deal with, although there is hope. You know, initiatives like the resolution recognizing October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Brevard County will help spread the word and educate others to the importance of early detection strategies, including monthly breast self-exams, mammograms, clinical exams. You know, as the president for Stuart Healthcare and the hospitals in the state of Florida, I'm honored that we presented this resolution and I'm excited you all passed it. Thank you very much.
And I want to thank you and your folks for being here, and I want to reiterate the fact that Daniel is the president of Stuart Health Systems, and he was kind enough to take a little bit away from his busy day to come here and represent his health system and all the health systems here in Brevard County.
Thank you. All right, that's it for resolutions. Moving on to consent, I have one card. Commissioner Tabaya?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I would like to vote no without comment on F-33. Just to be clear, no on the TDC appointment and yes on the Melbourne Tillman, as there are two on that. Also, I would like to pull for discussion F-34, Madam Chair.
I would like to pull F-34, F-24.
Okay, and I have a card for F-36, so can I get a motion to approve consent minus F-24? F-34 with noting that Commissioner Tabaya is no on the TDC appointment, yes on the Melbourne Tillman appointment. Does that sound correct? Cover it. Yeah, F-36 is the card.
Okay.
Yep.
I make a motion to approve all the others.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett. Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Tabaya? I think yours is first. Commissioner Smith says first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This came up in my meeting with our staff yesterday, and Parks and Recreation suggested, when we have, at our parks, we have preferred spots that are near streams and/or have different, better accommodations or better visibility or more comfortable, or whatever the reason may be. And she had suggested maybe increasing those fees by $3. And I thought, you know, if people think it's that special, and I know that people do because people have, constituents have called me and told me that they call a year ahead of time to book these spots because they're special to them. They go there every year. So I thought $5 or $7 for that special fee wouldn't be out of bounds. But I wanted to ask you guys if you had any thoughts, if you agree with me or you thought it was silly or whatever. So that's why I pulled it.
Okay. Commissioner Pritchett?
I don't disagree with you, sir. The question would be, because I think we're, I'm always trying to maintain the ability to cover costs, and I think we struggle with that continually, so. My question to Ms. Mary Ellen, if we go ahead and add a little bit more to that, would that help more with some of these fixed costs that you guys are always trying to cover?
Yes. Sorry, yes.
Okay, and it's not that much more to be there, and I think it would give you more ability to be able to keep the park in better shape as well. So Commissioner Smith, I'm not opposed to that. I think it's a minimal amount, and I know we're always struggling to keep that up, so I'd be in agreement with you, sir.
Ms. Tabaya?
Thanks, Madam Chair. And I spoke with Mary Ellen on this. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for all the work on this. She did rework it. So the residents didn't get a increase above CPI, which I think is very good. On top of that, she put residents priority by giving them an extra month in order to book before those that do out of state. She instituted seasonal, which couldn't be done for residents if we're going to hit that CPI. Though the fee increase, I balanced against a fee decrease that had gone out of there for folks that were not vacating the premises in a timely fashion. So unfortunately, this would upset the balance, you know, that was struck there because it's per day. So, you know, when you look at a $7 increase and a $30 or $32, or whatever the heck it is, you know, it's like a 25% increase. So again, sunshine, we follow it, and I probably should have stepped out of this from the beginning. I don't think it's a bad idea, but it's one that would take out of the balance the decrease versus the increase since it's a daily fee. So I just wanted to itemize why I'd be voting no on this, though I asked Mary Ellen to go through a heck of a lot of work on this. And just to point out, though, residents won't be receiving anything higher than CPI because of the work that came out of her office. So she did some great job.
Yeah, I kind of agree with you, Commissioner Tabaya, on these fees. The current structure, I would have to agree that I think this is a good balance and I would hate to lose that discount, so.
Why don't you make it $5? Then it's a $2 increase.
Why, you're asking me? Why don't I make it $5? I would say, I'm open to revisit this next year, but I kind of like how it's structured for this year, so.
That's why I brought it up. I wanted to hear what you guys had to say.
I think you make valid points. You know, and I would say just keep us informed if you're having, if you're struggling keeping up the grounds or if you see it as something that's necessary for next year's budget, just let us know. Okay.
Yes.
All right, Commission, what's your pleasure?
I think it's 2-2, so it's kind of faded, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but someone still has to vote on this item, though. We just have to make a motion.
Well, make the motion to make it a $5 increase, which would be a $2 increase over the three proposed.
I have a motion by Commissioner Smith.
I'm a second, but it's going to fail.
A second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. So.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. All right. F-34, Commissioner Tabaya?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I just wanted to thank the board for going along with the annual reports. I think we set some guidelines out there to the advisory boards, and I would happy to report we threw a great deal of them. Overall, the advisory boards did a great job on this. In fact, they probably went above and beyond. You set the bar pretty high. You don't need to go this far next time, and to be clear, some goals are longer than one year, so some of this you'll be able to put on next year. It's just very important that you keep us advised of what's going on, and you certainly did that in this one-page form. And if you have any suggestions as to how we can improve this form, I'd certainly appreciate that, but I think this was a win across the board. We have a little bit better understanding of what's going on, and I wanted to thank all the boards that went through the time in doing this, and maybe next year you can do it in less time. But anyway, I just wanted to point out what a good job that the advisory boards did with this one page.
Motion to approve F-34, Madam Chair.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Tabaya.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. And I agree, I think it was great. I think the reports were awesome. They were thorough, and I like the idea of the attendance on there as well. I think they did a fantastic job. So with that, motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to item F-36, I have a card. I don't know if we want to introduce this item. Or not? Edwin Santos? Come on up.
Sorry about the mask. I had some oral surgery.
Oh, that's okay. Go ahead, when you're ready, just state your name.
I'd just like to thank the commissioners. I'm here to represent the United Third Bridge and Puerto Rican Hispanic Chamber, accepting the Hispanic Heritage Proclamation that you guys had offered to give today, so I'm here by myself. The rest of the team is working on the Puerto Rican Day Parade, which is September, October 22nd, Saturday. I noticed today the breast cancer, so maybe when they do the walk, they could come down to Palm Bay, to City Hall to enjoy the festivities. Once again, I would like to thank the board, their staff, and the public for honoring Hispanic Heritage Month.
Thank you, and I wish, really wish we could have made this as part of the beginning of the agenda, but we're all trying to stay within the rules of our resolutions. And I think you meant F-37. It had 36 on it.
She told me to put down the, I'm sorry.
That's okay? No, 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 that's fine. That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have the resolution here for you.
Okay.
Okay.
Once again, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay. Sorry for the confusion, Jill. I have a motion to approve F-36. That's okay. Second by Commissioner Tabaya. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Moving on to public comments. I have Namor Thomas. I apologize if I messed that up.
You didn't mess it up, baby. You speak good.
Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Right?
Yes, you do, ma'am.
Three minutes. I'm speaking on behalf of the residents of this county, Tidysville, Mims, and Scottsmore. It's like we've been the unforgotten people during this hurricane, you know? You got beautiful Melbourne, Vieira, nothing happened to you guys, but we've been suffering. We've been suffering out there. No lights, the St. John River rising, animals walking around the place, dead deers. But no, no word for the commissioners. I had to knock on Tidysville door. I had to knock on your commissioner door. I emailed Miss Pickett. I even called 211. I called Brevard County, and all I got was excuses. Excuses, excuses, excuses. I was about to go to CNN, but I didn't want to make it public. I didn't want to make it political, and I didn't want to make it, oh, you know, political because I love my boonies out there. I love my $10,000 trailer home and whatever. It's mine. Why we didn't get no help? Only yesterday, Brevard County actually came along with FEMA and knocked on people's door yesterday. 10 days ago, hurricane passed, the water rising, we ain't seen nothing. Okay, we don't got nobody to knock on the doors. Ain't got nobody for Mims. Ain't got nobody. These people out here have fixed income. You know, we need help too. We are people too. We do vote. We vote for each one of you or each everybody else. We do vote. Some of we do pay taxes. Some of we might be crazy, but we do vote, and we need help. H-E-L-P, help, okay? You might look nice out here with your $200,000 housing, driving around, but we are there in airboats. That's what they're transportation, airboats, to move from family to family, to take care of the elderly out there, okay? My elderly friend that lives at 32755, right across, I'm right here, where you're sitting down, that's Geneva. They getting all the help over there. She can't receive any help. They getting all the help over there, she can't receive any help, okay? They keep denying her, okay? She's 62 years old, and she's being denied, okay? I have pictures, the water is up here, it's brown, they're dead, whatever those things are, they're big fat, um, deers or whatever, ferns, I don't know, I don't know public names or whatever, proper name, but they need help. And I'm asking, please, just a hug, just saying, I'm here, people, but no, nothing, nothing. Scottsmore, Titusville, and Mims, we need help. And that's all I gotta say, my three minutes, 21 minutes, thank you.
Ma'am, hold on just a minute. I just looked at your name. I've made every phone call, everybody that's called in so far, I'm trying to keep up with this. I don't remember you calling.
I-
And I, it's okay, but I've got a list of names, and I've been personally calling everybody. I just want to finish this. But if you've got a situation or water in your home, I need to know. Well, what's been happening is I have Mr. Scott, and we've been trying to gather this information, we've been sending the photos up, and just today, he was able to get us FEMA help. We have been working this 24/7. You've had roads wash out in Mims, road and bridges been out there, we've had holes. We have been spending almost all the resources in North Brevard because of the major flooding. We did not qualify for FEMA until just today, because this department has been working so hard with people sending us information and him going out there and taking photos. So I don't know if we've missed you, but they have been working very hard in my district, and I thank you so much for all your work, and for Mark and Susan for all the work, garbage pickup. I've been actually-
All they missed fluffy, they sure did miss fluffy, all of this they missed, but they knocked on the door yesterday with FEMA, and I do see before I do-
That's because we've been trying to get the FEMA. So I know you're frustrated.
Oh, yeah, who you telling?
Well, you know what? I need to find out when you called. I'm gonna ask my office, but once you look at me, I called every single person that's called my line, I have, and I've responded with emails. I'm gonna find out why I didn't get yours, but ma'am, they have been working, and I cannot tell you how great the staff has been.
That lady named Sarah at your office, you know what she did?
Who?
Sarah something, I got it on my phone.
I don't have a Sarah.
I'm not computer technology, but it's on my phone.
Okay.
And she sent us this, this, this ad. What we gonna do with an ad, a flyer? What a flyer gonna do for you?
I don't know, ma'am, but let me tell you, we're getting FEMA help now, and we've got some information that everybody that's emailed, we've been sending it out today. So we do have some help coming in, but until now, we didn't have funding, but now we do.
Okay, one more question before, I know about three minutes left, but before-
No, why don't you call my office tomorrow, I will pick up and talk to you, but I'm just, I just want you to know because-
Call your office personally, okay. This one fluffy gonna call, honey.
But I just wanted you to know that, that the staff has worked so hard, and I cannot thank the county staff enough for all the work they've done in Titusville, Mims, Scottsmore, and Coco.
And Scottsmore, we are people.
They have worked so hard out there, and I thank you guys so much.
Thank you so much, please, thank you, thank you, okay.
And I think it's important to mention, unless FEMA is automatically sent in, we have to fight for FEMA.
They said no, the whole time, FEMA has said no.
That's what I'm saying. So unless FEMA is automatically sent to your aid, we have to fight to get FEMA to cover your damages and your flooding.
Because the thing was, there's no communication. If there's no communication, we need some kind of communication. Karen, no, and look it over and see Geneva getting it, and when I get it-
Well, ma'am, we are now, because everybody's been sending me the photos, and Mr. Scott's been doing it. They've been doing it. And this, they've been doing it. They've got, they've got this done now.
Mr. Scott, could you give us an update?
Yes, ma'am, and, good evening Commissioners, and how are you, ma'am? I'm well, thank you. So a couple of things. One, we absolutely didn't forget about anyone. We've been working this area, as you guys have said, as hard as we can. Our folks have been up in Scottsmore, Mims, Titusville. I personally have, we have teams from Public Works as well, so we're doing it as well as we can. Commissioners are correct. That's not an automatic thing for us. For folks in Geneva, that's either Seminole or Volusia, depending on their, where they live. Now, they have a MIM zip code, and sometimes that can mess things up a little bit, but we've been working with our surrounding counties to help de-conflict that. The damage that Seminole and Volusia suffered was significantly more than we suffered in Volusia, than in Brevard. So they got it a whole lot faster, because it was a much more, for lack of a better term, obvious case, right? Because they had a whole lot more rain, they had a whole lot more wind impacts. We've had to very much fight house by house, case by case, to get there, and fortunately, FEMA agreed with us today and provided that assistance. I can speak with you after this, but you can go to disasterassistance.gov and apply, you can download the FEMA app and apply, and you can call 1-800-621-3362 to get assistance. And that is on our website, that went out on on social media today. So we are working very hard, and we will continue to be in that area.
That's what, that's what I wanna see, all the time, baby. I wanna see you till the water go down. I like that, I like that, I like you.
We got you.
Thank you, Namor. All right, Ms. Sullivan?
Brevard County needs to address sewage infrastructure and stop sewage discharges to the lagoon. When it rains, we dump. The sewage issue points to major problems with the infrastructure, said Florida Peer Director Jerry Phillips. We all know to stop sewage dumps, we need to fix that infrastructure. Hundreds of millions of gallons of sewage have been dumped to the lagoon since 2010, including 22 million gallons in 2017. In September, when it rained, Brevard County dumped 50,000 gallons of sewage to Port St. John Sewage Plant. With Ian Moore spills at Port St. John, another 7.2 million gallons of treated sewage to the Indian River Lagoon at South Beaches Plant, and there was only two to four inches of rain there. The issue is these sewage plants are over the state concurrency of 85%. Such spills undo all the work of the lagoon tax. But wait, it gets worse. Affordable Housing Ordinance is proposing a giant loophole for developers, waiving impact fees, concurrency exemptions, increased density with no consideration to near the lagoon, when we know such growth will impair the lagoon. A 50% bonus density by default and super bonus density on larger developments emphasizing flexibility. Here's the kicker. The developer doesn't have to actually build any affordable housing, just pay into the trust fund. It's unclear if the trust fund fee would even be sufficient to offset the impact fees waived. Waiving impact fees is bad news for fixing infrastructure, and increasing density near the lagoon will assure its death. In 2016, when the lagoon tax was sold to voters, it included sewage plant upgrades to AWT. In 2017, when there were 22 million gallon sewage dumped to the lagoon from South Beaches, promises were made to address the 60-year-old pipes and I&amp;I issue. This year, while other counties on the Indian River Lagoon are improving, Brevard continued decline went from an F++ to an F-. We are the only county with a tax, which is now at about $600 million, and the county with the declining lagoon. The people agreed to the half-cent sales tax to fix the lagoon, but we're snowed, because while we pay, this commission is putting more and more development on sewage treatment plants that are over the state concurrency of 85%, putting the lagoon at more risk. There's no plan to address the capacity issue, which means when it rains, Brevard dumps. We need to stop the sewage discharge to our river. Where the impact fee study, where's the impact fee study that adjusts the developers' rates that have not been updated in nearly two decades? Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yeah, you talked about how the Affordable Housing Plan waives impact fees, increases density, and offers a 50% density by default. What plan are you referring to?
So I attended a, the Affordable Housing Advisory Board meeting, where a proposed ordinance was presented in the agenda for that. It was not in the agenda that was sent out. I was one of three people that attended that meeting, and I asked for a copy of that scan, it, I can send you a copy of those documents, but-
I'm just curious, because that's nothing that we have passed, and that's not in the charter.
It will be coming to this commission, it will be approved or denied by the Affordable Housing Advisory Board Committee on October 20th.
Okay. Just a lot of accusations without anything in place.
I will send you the documents after the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
But just for the record, this board's not voted on anything like that. As far as, you know, affordable housing hasn't even gotten to us yet. And anyhow, as far as investments for the lagoon, I mean, we talk about how we don't have a plan, and I just got this report from our county manager, and while it's pretty long and extensive, I'm not going to read it line by line, but it, we've already invested $65 million in construction projects completed to eliminate discharge. We have $24 million in assessment work that we've completed. Ongoing projects, $60 million, and we have $165 million in planned projects. And while I'd love to go through each one, the several million dollars that we've invested in our infrastructure, I think that this commission is doing everything we can. We can't take responsibility for what wasn't done before we were here, but we're darn well taking charge of it now, so. It's easy to get criticized for the mistakes of past commissions, but we're doing everything we can now, and with an over $314 million investment, I think we're doing the right thing. Okay, so, again, says the woman wearing the silly hat. Thank you. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, just something that, you know, we have to be a little bit patient with. I don't know if we've ever had so much waterfall during a storm event as we did, and anytime you have that, even the best system's gonna have some messes. We had, you know, septic tanks overflowing, because the system gets so battered, but I've got to say, considering the storm that we had, it was probably the best scenario we've had in a long time, as far as trying to manage those overflows. So again, I cannot thank county staff enough. Mr. Abate, your leadership through the last few years of doing all the projects that you've done, I am amazed at how it's pulled off during this last crisis we've come through. It could have been really bad, but Brevard County actually did so well that we had to talk FEMA into giving us money, so thank you, sir.
Mr. Abate, can you talk a little bit about what Senator Mayfield was able to do for us as well? I think it's important to mention, because oftentimes, you don't hear her bragging about it, or posting about it on social media, or anything like that, but I'm pretty proud of our senator.
Yes, she worked very diligently this past session. She contacted our utilities department, spoke to the issues of what would be most helpful. There was a, on Beachside, in the South Central Facility, which is, excuse me, the South Beaches Facility, and was able to help and get $29 million of grants this past year. As a matter of fact, I know that she was as late as today, speaking to staff about what we could do, even additional work in light of everything that's occurred, and I know that she's making the effort to help us with deep well injection at the South Beaches site. That's about a $14 million project, and we are looking to see how we can further fund that earlier, so we can get that project online quicker. And Eddie's here, he could talk to you a little bit about the money that she obtained for two other projects that are currently in the budget that we have, we are in the process of receiving the grants for.
We've accepted through an agenda, as Frank pointed out, we're doing a $14 million upgrade on the South Patrick Drive, Riverside Drive corridor. This is going to be a resiliency project. The previous project that was completed was more of a pipe replacement upsize. This is looking at now addressing when stormwater events occur, to provide more capacity to handle those surge events, to avoid those overflow situations. We have a $6 million gallon AWT. What that means is, when discharges do occur, that the discharge going out will be advanced with water treatment, which is really, and professionally, I can say that the nutrient loading is very, very minimal. It's about as low as you can get in that regard, so we're excited about that. We also received a $2.2 million matching grant from FDEP to do another AWT. And, you know, just to, Madam Chair, just to tie in with Senator Mayfield, we've been in communication with her about expanding on other projects with regard to resiliency and minimizing, and she's, she's been very receptive.
And I, it just irritates me, because it's easy to snipe at us and snipe at government, because everybody likes to be angry with government every once in a while, or about something. But in reality, we're doing everything we can, as quickly as we possibly can. We have the money, we've made the commitment, not just as a board, but as a utility, we've made the commitment. I don't think we could go any faster or build anything bigger. If, I mean, if we could build a system that would guarantee never to have a spill, none of us could afford to live here, because we wouldn't be able to afford to pay for it. But, so we can only do the best we can, and I think these tens of millions of dollars, these hundreds of millions of dollars invested in the system now and in the future, I think is everything we can do to, to make sure that we're not doing anything harmful to the lagoon, so.
That's what I'm working on.
Thank you. I mean, again, you can't stop people from taking their shots, but I know you guys are doing a good job, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I appreciate this list, because I don't think people realize the investment.
Thank you.
I mean, it's pretty close to what the lagoon tax was planned to even collect, as far as the investments go, so I'm very pleased with this list, and I appreciate you getting it together for us.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any questions, Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I typically don't respond to the previous-
Me neither.
-speaker, because to do so elevates her to a level that she doesn't deserve to possess. She uses a lot of half-truths, she loves to point fingers. I'm not sure that she doesn't wear a tin hat and have black helicopters circling around her. Where she comes up with this information, she takes an awful lot of half-truths, presents them as facts. She interjects her opinion and presents that as facts. But, you know, I serve on the Indian River Lagoon Council, have since its inception back in October of 2015. Been chairman twice. We're doing an awful lot, the five-county consortium that serves this community, and I mean community, not Brevard County, but the Indian River Lagoon community. We've done tremendous, tremendous things, each and every one of county, and I got to tell you, as much as they've done, we smoked them, because we're the only ones that have taxed ourselves. And so we've done far more projects than any of them combined. So, you know, as you mentioned, if we had storm systems that would withstand any storm, we couldn't afford to live here. Case in point, Mexico Beach in Florida, and Houston a couple of years ago, they had 100% failure, 100% in their sewers, because you build a sewer to accommodate normal rainfall, and then you build in some extra to cover emergencies, and then every now and then, you get a storm that just blows everybody away, and you're going to have failures. And I'm not making excuses, I'm just stating facts. That's just the way it works. And we're doing the best we can. Granted, we are behind, we could have been doing this 15 years ago, but we weren't. But the key is, we are now, and our people have stepped up, they voted themselves a tax. Our county, our staff has worked their noses off to do everything they can to come up with the ideas. They've worked with scientists up and down the coast, and I couldn't be prouder of what we as a county are doing as a whole and individually, so. I'm sorry I'm speaking about this person, but I just couldn't keep my mouth shut one more time.
And I'm usually pretty good with just ignoring it, because it's always, you say half-truths, I think that's being generous. I think it's just, again, it's this drive-by sniping, and she leaves, and it's just, she gets her two cents in, and then makes all these accusations, and you're defending yourself, and then you hate yourself for even going there. But I feel it needs to be said, because a liar needs to be called a liar, and I'm getting sick and tired of it. I'm just tired of it.
You know, the other thing that amazes me is our, is our local newspaper, and I try and support it, but it becomes difficult when you have a discredited candidate that only got 23% of the vote, and they use her as a sounding board to allow, they give her a sounding board, so that they can, she can attack us and denigrate everything that we're doing, as, and they make her out to be some kind of expert, when she's not.
It's like a researcher, searching for the study they want to support to the results, I get it.
You know, part of that is, is the newspaper wants to make some money, and my goodness, that sells papers. You know, if it's, if it sounds very like, you know, bad government or whatever, you know, it'll sell papers. And I just wish that they would get a little bit more of the other side, or to get a little bit more balanced. What I hate about this the most is it confuses our community, and it gives everybody a lot of stress, and wondering if we're doing something. And I got to tell you, when you work with local government, we all live here, and everybody's working real hard for the same purposes and outcomes, and it's a good thing to be in. And it's a good thing to be in. I'm guessing Florida would be the same. I don't know, we'd have to ask Commissioner Tobias down there of what he thought when he worked in Florida. But I do know local government works, and it's wonderful. And I support local government. And I wish the newspaper had another way to make money. Maybe if we bought more ads, they wouldn't have to do that. Who knows? But yeah, it's tough. It's tough to swallow sometimes what you read in there and knowing that people could read that and believe it. But not you guys, because you're smart, right? Okay.
Thank you. All right. I don't have any more public comment cards. No public hearings. Unfinished business item was removed. So moving on to J1.
Good evening, commissioners. Item J1, the Solid Waste Management Department is seeking direction from the board with regard to the landfill gas purchase agreement and lease of land held between Brevard County and Brevard Energy LLC. Brevard Energy LLC has owned and operated a landfill gas-to-energy plant at the central disposal facility since 2006. As is permissible under the current agreement, Brevard Energy wishes to construct a renewable natural gas facility, whereas instead of converting the landfill gas to electricity, they will convert the landfill gas to pipeline-quality natural gas. They will pipe it out to a transmission main that runs parallel to I-95. One thing that they are asking for that is, in order to ensure a return on investment, that we restate, amend and restate the landfill gas purchase agreement and the lease of land. One of the items is the term being modified to 25 years from date of signature. I have presented three options for the board, and I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioner?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to approve option two. Quite frankly, and I mentioned this in my briefing, I didn't even know we sold natural gas out of these dumps, these trash pits. So I think that's pretty terrific. And I didn't know which one to support, so I asked Tom, and Tom said he would prefer two. So that's why I'm supporting number two. So I would make a motion to approve that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Smith to go with option two, second by Commissioner Pritchett. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item J2?
Evening, Board. Item J2 is a request for the Board of County Commissioners to consider a temporary waiver of permit fees for 90 days for certain building permits relating to storm damage caused by Hurricane Ian. Those permits are roof repairs and replacements, fences, AC, equipment repairs, screen enclosure repairs, repair of carports, drywall repairs, and repair of storm-damaged mobile homes. In the agenda item, we had asked that we stipulate that those are for storm damage. However, in looking at it from our system standpoint, we would just ask that the board waive the fees for those permit types regardless if it's storm damage or not for 90 days. It'll actually be easier for us from an administration standpoint. And I think it'll enhance the customer experience rather than coming into us and trying to process refunds for permits where we'd have to take payments online and then get them refunded. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you for getting this together and doing it. I think it's wonderful that you guys always think of these situations to help our community out. And I'd like to make a motion to approve it.
You want to make a motion to approve it with the inclusion of all permits? Is that-
Yes.
No, I don't think it was all permits, but the permits relating to repairs identified in the agenda item.
Okay. Have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I have no public comment cards for item K. So moving on to board reports. Mr. Abate?
I have no report.
Mr. Richardson?
I have no report.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I was just gonna brag on county staff, but I kinda already did that, so no report.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got three brief ones. First of all, as of this morning, 29 businesses have signed up for the Self-Certification Registry. This is not only great news, but shows high quality and character of the businesses that have gone forward. Unfortunately, one business, Tiger Claw Kung-Fu Academy declined to sign up. As it turned out, the head of this martial arts studio and pastor of a local church was arrested last month on charges of allegedly having sex with two teenage girls. So yeah, that's a major no-no. This is, are they allowed to do it? No. So this is important that businesses join up. Unfortunately, this stuff happens in our community in these type of businesses.
What was the name of that business again, where the guy was arrested?
It's such a great name, but such a horrible individual. Tiger Claw Kung-Fu Academy. So a local minister as well. So either way, 29 businesses have signed up, and thank you for all your work. And my staff's done a great job calling, and I imagine you guys have well. So thank you so much on that one. I'll keep you updated and give you a map. Okay, second of all, would be board reports as the end of the year approaches. We're getting pretty close to not a hard cap, but a cap of which I will be voting no should any go further. So I'll start at, we always start at one, so I'm gonna go backwards. D5, nine, D4, eight, D3, four, D2 hasn't had any in a while. I don't know why. And D1 has 11. So after we hit 12-
Are those resolutions?
Yeah, these are resolutions.
That's because people could call me saying that you guys said no.
And I'll continue to say no.
She just said two this meeting. Was this before this meeting?
No, this is, I included both of those.
Thanks.
And also, I want to thank everyone, as one was on consent today. So you guys are doing well.
Does consent count?
Consent does not count, to be very clear. So thank-
I'm so happy I made you happy.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Yes, we're all still good. Anyway, finally, the CRAs. I want to thank the board for coming together on that and sending stuff out. I wanted to give you the update because the 60 days is coming to a conclusion here, it looks like on October 16. At this time, we've only had four responses, so we're at 50%. Myra's currently working on it, and I appreciate that. I wish we'd have had a little back today, but I'm sure we'll see something in a couple of weeks. D1 did some great job there with Titusville. They're looking at that. We heard back from Cape Canaveral. And unfortunately, we also heard back from Cocoa Beach, and I'll quote again, "Cocoa Beach, quote, 'does not lend itself well to the existence of affordable housing opportunities.'" So they basically said, "We don't give a damn." Either way, I want to make this very clear. Putting affordable housing in your plan is a good first step. But financing that is, I think, what we're looking for. And I think we've taken some pretty good leadership here by the one that we have direct control over, Myra, by putting some dollars behind that. Because they've always been in plans, but if you don't fund it, it's just words, and it's not really helping anyone. So I want to thank Titusville for making those changes. We don't expect it immediately, but this is a process to work through. The same with Cape Canaveral, to help Cocoa Beach. And I hope to hear from Cocoa downtown Diamond Square, Rockledge, and Melbourne. Again, we just want to see that you're working for, working for to putting resources to help those in need. But again, Board, I want to thank everyone. We're taking steps here, and our partners, our local partners should be doing the same. And some have stepped forward. And I want to, again, shout out to District One for getting in touch with the local CRA and making sure they participate. So hope to hear from those four and hope to have some markable change here in the future. Thank you for the time, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Smith?
No report.
I don't have any report, other than to say I'm disappointed Cocoa Beach doesn't want to contribute to affordable housing. Maybe we can find another way they can contribute. And with that, I'll call this meeting adjourned.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program sponsor and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.